Gentlemen, are you ready down there? Oh, there he is. He's on the phone. The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Denison, Texas is now in session. This evening, our invocation will be led by Alton Blakely, pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church.
Let us pray. To God, our Father, we come before you right now in the name of Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Heavenly Father, for this is a day that you've made and we rejoice and be glad in it. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the east that have assembled, heavenly Father, to take care of the business of the city. Heavenly Father, we pray, heavenly Father, for our councilmen and councilwomen, heavenly Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ that you'll just continue to bless them, heavenly Father, that they may be able to see visions and futuristic activity in this large city. Heavenly Father, we pray for our mayor, heavenly Father, we pray, heavenly Father, that you just continue to crown her with the wisdom of Solomon, heavenly Father, that she may continue to look over this great city, heavenly Father, and continue to guide, direct, and lead us, heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, then heavenly Father, we just pray for each and every individual under the sound of our voice, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, heavenly Father, that they be able to be proactive, heavenly Father, instead of reactive. Heavenly Father, and then heavenly Father, we be able to look past each other, heavenly Father, and look at what the needs of each other, and we'll be ever so careful and mindful to give you all the praise, yonder, and the glory, for us in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we are honored to have representatives from the Parkside Baptist Church Kids Ministry, and we have with us tonight Kathy Lovell, who is the Children's and Preschool Director, and we have Grayson Powell, Lucy Kilo, and Abby Walker. So ladies and gentlemen, anytime you're ready, you can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to peace, excellence, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so very much. At this point in every meeting, we set aside time for any citizen to speak, make public comments on any action item on the agenda. In order to speak, you must first fill out a request to speak card before reaching this point in our agenda. This evening, we have one card, is that all we have? So we have Diane Williams, who would like to speak. Diane, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait and speak when we address the item? I give you that option.
I'd like to address the item.
Okay. Thank you. Item three, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number four, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting the City of Denison budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending on September 30, 2024, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget. Ms. Osseball.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to hopefully finalize the budget. We've had many hours of planning, meetings, discussions, including a budget workshop in June, so hopefully tonight, this will be the end of it. As you know, our proposed budget has been posted on our website since August the 11th and made available to the public through our city clerk's office. The public hearing and adoption of the budget is set for this evening, September the 5th, 2023. I just want to go over some final figures. For the general fund, on the bottom left, we budgeted for ending the current year with 63 days of reserve, and in the middle column, you'll see that we're anticipating ending with 66 days. For fiscal year '24, we are budgeting with the plan of ending with 60 days of reserve. The revenues reflect a 15.6% increase over last year, and the expenses reflect a 15.9% increase over last year. On the utility fund, we budgeted to end the year with 66 days, or sorry, 85 days, but we're anticipating ending at 66. And then for fiscal year '24, our budget shows us to end at 60 days, which is our minimum days of requirement. Okay, on our restricted funds, in addition to our operating funds, we have over 50 restricted funds. The money held in these funds is for restricted purposes and cannot be used for general operations. We anticipate beginning fiscal year '24 with $56 million and ending with $31 million. Please note that the majority of these funds are bond funds that are designated for certain water and sewer projects, or street projects, or other general bond projects. So to recap, this budget will support over $440,000 in general capital funding and $640,000 in utility capital funding. It also supports increased costs due to operations, costs such as electricity, insurance costs, supplies cost increases, and not to mention market and COLA adjustments for personnel. Staff recommends holding the public hearing and funding the projects and operations identified in the budget, and also approving the fiscal year '24 budget and ordinance as presented.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
Just thank you to Lori and your team for all you've done. You can always tell it's the very last budget meeting when you're the only one sitting up front. Heard about it, heard about it, but you know, we always lay out our program of kind of what we want and how priorities for the city, and your team did a fantastic job of getting us there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion from council?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the City of Denison budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending on September 30, 2024, and appropriate the funds for the various funds and purposes of said budget.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. This does require a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantime?
Thank you, Mayor. As I call your name, if you'd please cast your vote, yes or no? Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Massey is absent. Councilmember Crowley, or sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $2,578,839,778, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denison, Texas on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denison for the year 2023, in the amount of .652034 for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the appropriament, appropriation, apportionment, I'll get it right in a minute, of such ad valorem taxes. Ms. Osseball?
Good evening again. The budget that was just approved reflects general fund revenue totaling over $46.1 million. This total is supported in part by the proposed tax rate of .652034. This is the same tax rate that the City of Denison has had since 2015, so that's for five years. This rate is higher than the no new revenue rate of .642342, but is lower than the voter approval rate of .859743. As you read earlier, the Grayson Central Appraisal District has assessed the City of Denison appraisal values at $2,578,839,778. Staff recommends holding a public hearing and adopting the ordinance, approving the assessment role, and setting the tax rate at .652034.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of Grayson County, Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $2,578,839,778, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denison, Texas on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denison for the year 2023, in the amount of $0.652034 for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. This does require a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantime?
Thank you, Mayor. As I call your name, if you'd please respond to yes or no? Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Massey is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Ms. Osseball?
Hello. If the city is adopting a budget that requires more property tax revenue than the previous year, then council must also vote to ratify this tax increase that supports the budget. So even though our tax rate will remain the same at .652034, due to the increased property values and new properties added to the role, this will increase our overall tax revenue, which requires council's action. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this tax increase that is reflected in the fiscal year '24 budget.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley. This does require a roll call vote. Ms. Wallantime?
Thank you. As I call your name, if you'd please vote yes or no? Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Let the record deflect, Councilmember Massey is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, Lori? It's done for one more year, huh? So take 24 hours off and start working on next week's agenda. All right. All kidding aside, thank you so much for your efforts and the efforts of your team for putting together this amazing budget, and we all know, we've seen the do not disturb signs on your doors, so thank you. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the proposed Denison Development Alliance fiscal year 2024 budget. Ms. Wallantime? No, Ms. Wallantime.
I don't mind if somebody else wants a term.
Actually, my agenda says Tony Ky, so you don't look like him.
Well, I'm just going to introduce him. The Denison Development Alliance, DDA, is funded primarily through 4A sales tax, and as you know, their purpose is to help stimulate growth in our local economy. The DDA Board of Directors met and approved their fiscal year '24 budget on August the 16th, and Tony Ky, DDA president and certified economic developer, is here this evening to present their budget to council for approval.
Mr. Ky?
Madam Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
You have a copy of our budget? I also brought kind of a working copy that we use in-house, and I think Chris handed that out. So I just wanted to go over a couple of things and then answer any questions you might have. First off, if you will take a look at the sales tax revenue, we're budgeting 8%, but this year, I think we're going to have an average of a 12, 11 to 12% increase in sales tax. That's pretty phenomenal. For the first 20 years I was here, it was about a 2% to 3% year-over-year increase, so things are getting better. I want to go down to the property tax from Florstone for some of our new members. We did a build-to-suit for Florstone in 2015 as part of our incentive package for them. We locked in a 20% interest, a 20-year note, I believe that was at 7% interest, and so that was part of the deal, and what happened is one of our board members at the time said, why don't we pay that note off in '15? Okay, so we did pay the note off in '15, so then we received five more years of lease payments. That was a $2 million windfall for the City of Denison. It's that guy right there that made that little notation, so he gets a pat on the back for that. We did finish that Florstone project just this last couple of weeks. Tiffany's been working on it. They're paying the lease off early, so we just deposited about $800,000 of the remaining part of their lease. So we're pretty happy with that, and property sales tax, a new item on this year's budget, is property sales income. Historically, we gave land away, but things are changing, and so now we've got several contracts on different pieces of property in our industrial park, and we're pricing that at $50,000 an acre. So there's some speculation in that, because just because I have it under contract doesn't mean it's going to close, but if it does, this is what we have under contract so far. Really, going down the administrative expenses, you can see the comparison between the last year, we're adding, and we've added $25,000 for consultant fees because of all the activity we have on our properties. That involves engineering and geotech reports and some other reports that we may need to fund with all the activity we have. Libel to insurance, I'm sure you're all familiar with what's going on in the insurance business, if you can even get insurance, some states cannot, but that's a pretty significant jump. Believe me, I tried to negotiate that, but there was no room to get that, but program expenses under workforce development, we've put in there $150,000 for a matching grant through Workforce Texoma and the state. That grant, I'm still working on that to see if that's something we want to do, and working with the DISD. Sherman got last year's allocation, and so they have an electronic engineering lab at Sherman ISD, so funding will start for the next round on October 1st. So we can get up to $150,000 matched for that. The lab itself is around $200,000. That's to get our students in a position to be employed in the tech sector, and there's going to be a lot of really quality jobs for our students, so we want to make sure they're trained. So we put that in there, and we'll be working with Janie over at Workforce Texoma. The other items, mainly property development, obviously, we're selling property, we're putting in water and sewer, getting our other parks ready to go. We're targeting the tech sector, which are the suppliers to those two semiconductor plants in Sherman. Obligated incentives, that's what we do, so those are pretty much the same numbers we've had. We've added a little bit to reclamation incentive because we're down to the very final major ones that we need to get that facade off of, so we may have to stretch out a little bit to get those done. Marketing is basically the same agenda we have every year. We don't spend that much money in marketing, but we can, by 4A law, allocate that much in case something came up that we really wanted to do some major campaign. We spend around $70,000 in marketing. So that's a quick overview, be glad to answer any question.
Questions for Mr. Ky? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For all of your efforts and putting this together.
Tiffany for helping me put this together.
Tiffany, thank you, but thank you for all the work that you do that supports the growth of our city. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the Denison Development Alliance fiscal year 2024 budget as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a professional services agreement with plumbers, engineering for engineering, project management, and construction services related to the Northwest Denison Development, or NWDD Utilities Project, in the amount of $5,774,713, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Sterns?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So we're excited to bring this to you tonight. This is the rest of the engineering for the project that's on your screen. I know you've seen this map a couple of times now. A number of these pieces to get water and sewer out to Preston Harbor and the FM 84 corridor here in Denison are actually, have already been designed. Several of them are actually under construction. This is to bring the rest of those elements to 100% design and then support the construction after they've been designed and a bid has been awarded. So the city's worked with plumber engineering for over 30 years now, so we think that they are the ones to help us with this project. They've done some major water and sewer projects in Denison, ones that are in development right now. On this slide, the bolded elements are the ones that are included in this contract. So Phase 2 and 3 of that 24-inch Northwest Water Line, Phase 4 and 5 of the 36-inch Sewer Interceptor, the sanitary sewer truck receiving station, Preston Harbor lift station, and the force mains are included in this contract. The 12-inch FM 84 water line improvements, that has been completely designed in a separate contract, we're moving forward with construction right now. Phase 1 of that 24-inch Northwest Water Line was included in the Lake Texoma Raw Water Pump Station project, which is currently under construction. Phase 1 of the Sewer Interceptor is under construction right now, and we're moving forward with Phase 2 and 3 of that project also. I'm present for questions. The Director of Marketing, Alan Tucker, with Plumber Engineering is also here, and Chris Young, CEO and President of Plumber Engineering, is also here.
Questions for Ms. Stern? Question for any of our guests? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the professional services agreement with plumber engineering for engineering, bid, and construction services related to the Northwest Denison Development, or NWDD Utilities Project, in the amount of $5,744,413, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the growth continues. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on repairing or replacing the enclosure structure at Waterloo Pool. Mr. Eastwood?
Good evening, Mayor and council. July 2023, the City of Denison retained the services of Hewitt Zollers to conduct a structural assessment of Waterloo Pool enclosure. The assessment determined the enclosure is inadequate, conditioned due to the nature of corrosion that has taken place in the still members, and lack of a well-defined lateral load resisting system. Because of the level of damage, the 2018 Existing Building Code requires the building to be brought up to the current building code. In the near term, use of the pool enclosure should cease during periods with wind speeds predicted to be more than 25 miles an hour, as the basis can actually fail. As a result, two solution options for consideration are, A, as shown here, repair the nadatorium structure and enclosure, or B, completely replace the nadatorium structure and enclosure. There is flexibility within both options, and depending on what direction is, if to move forward, staff would work diligently with Hewitt Zollers to create a design that works for the city. Option A, as shown here, is a 20-year option, or what I should say is it'll allow the structure to last 20 years. The process in total would take six months. It is a repair of the damaged items. We would seek to have a new HVAC system, or AHVAC system, as we don't have one, and dehumidifier system, strengthening of the shelter as a whole, and the total cost would be $2.4 million. Something that is worth noting is because transitions will take place, we will not be grandfathered with certain things that are occurring currently. So for example, per the International Code Council, which the city adopts, the school district would not be able to utilize our facility any longer, because we don't, we wouldn't have an adequate storm shelter with this option. Option B, and let's see. Very similar, the main difference, similar in drawing, I mean, the main difference is we are replacing the structure in its entirety, and this would give us roughly 50 years of a new structure. The process from start to completion is estimated to be 12 months. As noted, everything will be replaced within the enclosure. We would have an enclosure for the mechanical room, new electrical lighting, and electrical components. We would also seek to have an HVAC and dehumidifier system. The total project here would be roughly $4.8 million. Payments for either option will come out of the Parks and Recreation Fund, Fund 71, the aquatic fund fee, and likely the general fund to cover potential loan payments. Staff makes no recommendation and rather seeks direction from council on their preferred option, option A or option B. Additionally, staff is seeking direction in determining if the pool should remain closed or resume operations leading up to construction. As a recap, use of the pool should cease when winds are 25 miles an hour or higher. If we decide to open during that time period, staff would seek to accommodate community access by creating a standard operating procedure and policies to consider wind speeds, and there will of course be different considerations as a result. Representatives of Hewitt Zollers and city staff are here to answer any questions.
Justin, you said that the option 1 would be a six-month timeframe. Did I miss what you said would be the timeframe on option 2?
12 months.
12 months, okay.
Estimated, yes.
So we just doubled.
Mm-hmm.
Are both of, oh, I'm sorry. Are both of them the same in the shelter sense, like even option 2, the high school, Denison ISD could not use the facility?
They could use the facility in option 2.
So I discussed that with Julie, and Julie, Julie is not aware that that is the case.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to double check. The laws that were adopted to require schools to start having these safe rooms uses the term educational facilities, and it talks about construction of educational facilities or additions to existing educational facilities. And I don't know that those terminologies would extend to make a city swimming pool an educational facility. So that just came up this afternoon, so that's something we would need to double check and see if that's accurate.
Thank you.
With the new structure possibly lasting twenty or fifty years, what's the life left in the pool?
We would probably want to get another facility assessment specifically for the pool, but staff believes based on information we have now, we could probably get another five years out of the pool, but that's not the significance of what we're looking at here. That would be a much lower cost, most likely, yeah.
That's one thing I'm thinking is, is if we just have, if we have to do a reassessment in five years, redo the pool, and option two essentially is just redoing the whole shell, my thought is, is why don't we look at a third option where we redo the shell and the pool at the same time and just see how much additional cost that is, and maybe we do some remodeling on the inside, redesigning, things like that.
Because it's not fully ADA compliant or anything when you, or up to code really, when you go in that main entrance and that's the only hallway to get in or out.
Yeah, if we're going to spend five million, I mean, because I'm leaning towards, let's get something that's going to last. People love Waterloo Pool. I love Waterloo Pool. If we're going to be tearing most of it down, look at something where we're just remodeling the whole thing, just seeing what the cost difference is, if it's worth spending the extra right now versus spend this and then five years having to tear out everything on the inside anyway.
So I want, I'd like to speak to Hewitt-Zollers. My understanding, John, is that the damage that we see now is because of the chlorine. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, God, that is correct. Excuse me, let me introduce William Wallace. He's our senior structure engineer, and he was the one who did the assessment. We also had, last week, had one of our aquatic architects that visited the site. Unfortunately, he is not here with us, but we'll do our best to try to answer your question. But yes, to answer your question, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so that's not going to go away. If chlorine is causing the damage, that is not going to go away on a future facility.
That is, that is correct. That's why both options A and option B, we had recommended and a HVAC system with the humidifier. So that system will prevent or minimize the chlorine accumulation within the pool.
Okay, so is there any, is there any benefit to be had by converting the pool to saltwater?
The issue we came up with in investigating the saltwater was that because of the amount of use that it gets, chlorine is what kills and disinfects, the salt would not be able to keep up with the quantity of use that's being used. Salt is mainly for a smaller residential type situation.
You answer my question.
And it would, your pool is already pretty old, so it would accelerate the actual swimming pool, because it's salt is a.
It would cause more corrosion. The other thing to note, Mayor, is that the current structure was not coated with anything, like a PVC lining or cover over the metal, and with the new structure, it would be covered and coated, so it would last a lot longer.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
The key thing is what you said, it's the, you've got to get the humidity and that chlorine gas out of that building. It needs to be exhausted out, and then if you put in the AC type HVAC stuff, it'll make it last a whole lot longer.
Okay.
And could I, could I address?
If no, I'm sorry.
Could I address the comment about the need for storm shelter? I look at this, this swimming pool, it's an extension of the school. They have school sanctioned events there. I see the yellow jacket symbols, and we got records, and so it's the same as if that pool was on, on the property, you know, of a K through twelve. And so it's something, you know, we would need to discuss with the AHJ, the authority having jurisdiction as to the need. And by the way, both options have a storm shelter in it, as it stands now.
Both options have a storm shelter, but you're saying that it, that it disqualifies usage by the, by the school system? I mean, that's.
So, so the discussion she's asking is, we were all in the impression that, focus on option one, did not include any kind of structure for storm protection?
Yeah, for the, for that existing concession area, we were going to harden it the same as.
Under option one?
Yeah.
Which is the two, two point eight?
Yes. Both, both options, we plan to armor the entry, the concession, the restroom area.
So there will be a safe room?
Yes, safe room for both options. The two point four and the four, four point eight, both options include armoring, a safe, safe.
Well, that, that's good to know because that's not what we've been told.
Yeah.
And, and we will need to, if, if there's going to be a safe room there, then that becomes a moot point.
Yeah.
Because we, it, it makes no sense to move forward with something that, that disqualifies usage by our school system.
Right.
So, okay.
I've got one more thing.
Okay.
So currently, if there's lightning, they have to clear the pool with these new roofs. Is that still the same or depend, you know?
It's not lightning, it's mainly wind.
Well, I know, but with the new, with the new plans, like, you know, if we were to redo, redo these roofs, would it still be the same? If there's lightning, would we have to get, clear the pool or would?
No, for lightning, for lightning, and that's a difference. We can put lightning protection, and we would include that in, in both options.
But to answer your question, Councilman, the option one or option A, we are not, the repair is just the structure. We're not repairing, we're not replacing the walls or the roof. However, option two, option B, there's going to be a new, new roof.
But, but we can add lightning protection.
Yes, very much so.
To both.
Any further questions of council? Okay.
I had a question regarding if a lot of this is pivoting on Denison ISD and the usage that they have, would it be, I guess, too much to ask to see if they would be willing to bear some of the cost of the renovation?
Well, they pay for usage of the pool, so. I, I, there's nothing that says that you can't ask the question, but it's highly unlikely that they would participate in the, in a facility that doesn't belong to them. Ms. Williams, it's your turn. State your name and address for the record, please, Mayor.
Diana Williams, seven forty Glenwood Drive, Denison, Texas. I just now heard all of this information tonight for the first time myself, but I came tonight to ask the council to please think about either replacing or repairing our pool. It's such a vital part of our community. I mean, we have seniors that go out there, we have anywhere from sixty-five to eighty seniors that come out there just about every day. And, you know, if you could see these people coming in in their walkers and their wheelchairs and their canes. My mother-in-law's ninety-four years old, and she goes to the pool, and she wouldn't be able to walk if it wasn't for the pool. It's such a, such a need in our community. And also think about our kids that take their swimming lessons there. You know, we live on Lake Texoma, and our kids need to know how to swim. I mean, I'm sorry, but they do, and we have, have taught hundreds of children how to swim in our community. It's such a vital part of what we do. Also, our firemen go there and trained for their underwater rescues, so that's another thing that the pool uses it for. Our swim team comes from the high school, and all, all ages come. They sponsor meets several times a year, and they go to meets. They bring people into our community. So our pool is, even though you may not realize, it is such a vital part of what, of our community, and we need a pool, we need one. So please, please, I know it's a lot of money, and hope it is, but we've got to have it, we're going to have growth coming, you know, we're looking at maybe some possibilities of having a new pool down the road, but it's several years out, and I don't know what these people would do if we closed the pool, so thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from council. I mean, there are two options before you, as they've both been explained. I, I guess we could go back to the drawing board to come up with a third option, if, if that's something that the council wants to see, as articulated by Councilmember Court Wright. I think we need, we need legal advice to make sure that we're moving forward with something that, that makes sure that it continues to be used by our, by our school system, because they are, they're a partner in this community, and we don't want them to have to go look somewhere else to be able to, to practice. I mean, those are our kids. So, you know, I, we need to hear from the, the council whether, whether we, we bring it up, the, we bring the structure up to code, which is what I'm hearing you say, that it doesn't need code now, so, so that's a given, that we have to bring it up to code. So do we go with two point four and bring it up to code and then address in five years the pool? Or another option at that point in time as we move down the road? Or do we look at option number two, which is twice that, four point eight, that gives a new enclosure, but still does not address the pool? So, and, and the other thing that must be addressed is what is the council's pleasure in terms of, do we shut the pool down? Or do we adjust and put in place a safety protocol that says that if the winds reach twenty-five miles an hour, that we have to, we have to shut it down and clear the pool? So, so that's what, that's what the council needs to make a decision about tonight.
I guess my thought is, I would like to keep the pool open and just have safety protocols until this gets fixed. If we're going to, if we're going to hold off on the pool and reassess and redo it, I think we do option one. If we want to make, do something now to make it last a long time and go with option two, then I think we need to look at redoing the whole pool right now and just get it all done at once, instead of spending five million and then redoing the pool again. While, while they're redoing all the outside, I think redo the inside too at the same time. That's my thoughts.
I know when we, when Mr. Crowley and I served on the, the school's bond committee recently, a big thing in the community is there's, there's not a real taste anymore for Band-Aid fixes. You know, we've had to do that because of the way costs and everything, and just the way the city was doing at that time, which is completely understandable, but I think everyone's kind of moving towards, we need to do the permanent fix. So I would be for the four million as well, if, if I knew that this is where the pool is going to be for fifty years. Like, is there a way we could have an option C that had maybe a master plan for this site so that we know, can this accommodate more people? Can we add more parking as we need it? Otherwise, it's not worth it to build something that's going to last fifty years when we can't use it for fifty years. And I think that's kind of.
And at our Vision twenty forty, one of the things that came out in, in the top twenty was an aquatic center, which is different from Waterloo Pool. But if, you know, if we had everything in place right now, it would take at least four years before, before that could be accommodated. If we had the land and we had the partnership and we had it all pulled together, it would be at least four years before we could do that. So, you know, if our, if our intent is to, to, to dream greater and do something greater, then do we want to spend four point eight million dollars and then turn around and try to sell to the community that we want to build an aquatic center that, that addresses the needs of all, including small children? So, but, but this is the.
That's a good point. I mean, if we're, if, as a city, if we're planning to do an aquatic center somewhere within the next ten years, if that's a goal of ours, then maybe option one is good to hold this off for ten years until we get a big aquatic center type thing, if that's our goal. If our goal is to have Waterloo Pool there long term, then. So an aquatic center would be, in my mind, someplace that where they, the swim team would still be able to do their meets and everything, but it would have more features to it essentially, correct?
Has kind of a rec center component to it.
Yeah, I mean, because I do remember that from, is a, is a big aquatic center, so.
And we have done a feasibility study, and so, so.
That's a, I.
The.
That's a good point.
I, I'm, you know, we need to hear from, from each of you how we, yes.
Would you mind if we made one more, couple of statements, please? Is it okay? Just something to think about is when he was talking about the replacement or repair of the pool, in five years, he's not talking about like a major rehab, we're looking at just some, some repair work that can be done and then extended, extend the life. The other thing is even if you're planning on doing an aquatic center ten years in the, in the future, if this, if we do option B, for example, yeah, the second one, you could have two locations. That way, the aquatic center could be for the senior folks and other things going on, and then use this one as for the kids or for the school or something along those lines. The other thing about the, if you do a total rehab of the pool, you're looking at the pool being down for a couple of years. So if we were to actually take the top off, redo the pool, it's going to be eighteen months or more by the time for that work, and so it'll be completely down. So if you did that after a rehab, after you had the aquatic center, then you had another space to fall back on. And then I would like to also caution, extremely caution about leaving it open while this, during this time for the six months.
Thank you, Ronnie. Yeah, not to throw figures because we didn't get an actual assessment, but we have some staffs that are experts in the field, and we feel the pool itself could be roughly a quarter of a million dollars, so not so significant. And then as Ronnie had mentioned, if we do an SOP, we will do our due diligence to put the standard operating procedures in place for the closure of the pool. Mind you, there's going to be a lot of variables, so there's going to be a lot of, you know, if we get to, you know, twenty-three miles an hour sort of thing, or projected winds, there's, there's just a lot of different considerations we need to keep in place, and we will, we could operate within the framework we have and make it happen, but also not to just keep stating what he said, the City of Denison is growing, and we have seen and thriving quality of life communities, two plus pools. So especially depending on where. So, especially depending on where, where growth may be, so, all things to consider for sure.
So, what prevents if you... If you repair the, the, um, the enclosure now, what prevents you from, from doing the rest of the work later? I mean, what?
The, and this could be more of a Hugh Zollers question, but the repairs were taking out, uh, sections and actually replacing those sections where the, um, the other option would be completely.
If you knew the roof.
Knew everything, yeah. And, um, they're talking with, uh, the group here and the architect, there's some flexibility, so I think we all kind of have in our minds what the pool looks like now, but it may not be the exact same materials moving forward. There may be some other options, and, um, as far as materials and then design, that we may be able to go with.
Well, but, but in the long run, um, we have to have a way to pay for this.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we've got, we've got four hundred thousand dollars that can support that service for.
Yeah.
For, we don't know. And that depends on whether we go with, with option one or option two.
Sure.
But at some point, uh, it's, it's highly likely that, most especially if we go with option two, that we'll have to tap the general fund in order to be able to pay for it, so,
I think with the repair option, it'll minimize the downtime, minimize costs, and the funds that we won't have to tap into, we can, you know, allocate this for a future aquatic center and just, you know, be able to get our community back in the pool by the time summer gets here, so.
Anybody else?
It's tough, it's a tough decision, 'cause you, you spend the four million and it lasts so much longer if we needed to reuse it as a different facility, if it becomes our Parks and Rec Center or, um, Public Works, uh, you know, office and that kind of thing. It's hard, it's hard to know, and I won't lie, I don't think that Waterloo Pool is the prettiest structure, um, out there. I don't know that it puts our best face forward. When Justin said it could look different, that caught my eye a little bit, uh, so I don't, it's just, it kind of depends on how far down the road an aquatic center is. You know, if it's ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's probably worth it to upgrade the lighting and the whole structure itself for this one.
That first, that first option is a ten or twenty year, was it?
Twenty.
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 Twenty years for the structure.
I will say I do agree with, with staff on the being open with the twenty-five mile an hour winds, that's so difficult. I can only imagine if I was in charge there, I would just be watching the hell of a time. I would not be able to do anything else other than watch K-ten or K-XI to see what the wind speed is. And then you're gonna have to deal with getting everyone out and hoping to get them out quickly enough, um, before something happens, so I would, I know it would close it, but I'd hate to be the one that had to make that call. Is it twenty-three mile an hour wind, is that recorded, is that really twenty-five? You know, I mean, it just, it makes me nervous.
Well, we have to make a decision. It's not like we get to say, let's talk about this later. We do need to move forward with, with making a decision about, if it is the, if it's the will of the council to repair the facility, then we need to have, make a decision about to what, uh, to what level do we repair it? I also will reiterate, I think we need to get legal advice on, in terms of the, of course, if, if, I don't know where the, there he is. Uh, if, if there is to be a safe room in both of them, then I guess that becomes a moot point, but, but we need to be sure of that.
Yep.
So.
Have we looked at any of our, our grant funding opportunities? Has THF expressed any interest in helping, um, since it does provide such a service for so many right now even? Or, you know, any of our other foundations, have we tried any of that yet? Or since this is just preliminary, we haven't really, okay, swap that out.
I guess, I guess, the thought I keep having is, is if, if our plan is, and the community wants to have a big aquatic center, I guess my thought is, is we, we do option one, which gives us another twenty years with that, and then, um, do the aquatic center, and, and then, I mean, twenty years is a good amount of time, and then if we have to do a full renovation at that point, if we want, if we do that, then we can address that in twenty years, I guess. Guess that's kinda my thought now, is that, um, if that's the goal of our community is to have an aquatic center.
Is that a motion?
I motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion by council member Court Wright. Oh, wait a minute, we've, we've gotta know what this motion is, we've got to include whether or not to close down the, the facility, um, when the winds get greater than, get equal to or greater than twenty-five miles an hour.
So, Justin, you recommend that we close the pool?
Uh, so don't put Justin in that position, they said staff did not make the recommendation, so.
I don't, I don't make a recommendation, but there are, uh, a lot of considerations if we do, um, have that. We can make it happen, um, but there will be a lot of, uh, different things we have to consider in making that happen.
I would recommend that we try to make it work. And if we, and if we see that it becomes an issue, then we can, the council can change that decision.
I like that.
And have it, and have it, uh, shut down.
I, I, I just know that there, we talk about the, the, um, people who go there and exercise. I mean, I have a lady that, when they close it down for maintenance, asks to use our pool because, until it opens back up again, you know, and so it.
So you're saying there's an alternative?
I'm just saying, it, I mean, it is important to many members of our community, and so I think, I agree, I think we try our best to keep it open, and if it just becomes too much of a burden and a hassle, then we can address that.
We have concern. So, I, I want to make clear your motion, that we go with option one for two point four million, which is repair of the structure, and we, um, close down the facility if the winds get equal to or greater than twenty-five miles an hour.
Mayor, I make a motion that we go with option one, and that we keep the pool open unless the winds get above twenty-five miles an hour.
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion by council member Court Wright, and a second by council member Hander. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Diane, I knew you'd be happy. You're very welcome. Pursuant to chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time, as deemed necessary during this meeting, to receive legal advice with its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, section five five one dot zero seven one. Confer with city attorney regarding alternate judge. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, section five five one dot zero seven four, alternate judge. The time is six fifty-eight, and the council is now in executive session.